Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Kathers?
Yes.
Ms. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Mollmar?
Yes.
And Mr. Zbyski?
Yes.
Okay, and moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that members of the board wish to pull from their regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing none, a motion is needed to vote on the consent agenda items. Do you have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Couple of quick questions, Cal.
Yes, sir.
On how for the facet girls basketball lead? Is that at the recommendation of the head coach? Was that?
Typically, the lead is recommended by the athletic director, Andrew Spino. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, it's like in football, it's all Galli, Coach Galli, it's the staff that he hires and recommends. So is this a football model thing?
In terms of the assistants?
No, the, at the, no, that works.
Where are we talking here? Let me find it.
So we got John Betson as the girls' lead, is that kind of like the path to head coach? He, is the lead a head coach?
The lead is kind of like a head coach, but they have more than paperwork responsibilities and coordination responsibilities beyond the other coaches. But we have a lead eighth grade and a...
Oh, yeah, the lead.
I'm gonna look over here at Mr. Kiss, could you explain how it works?
Yeah, each program has a program lead. So technically, they're not the head coach, but they are like, like Mr. Gregory started to explain, they're in charge of making sure final forms is up to date, making sure jerseys get handed out appropriately, returned appropriately, equipment is in and out, you know, taking record of those types of things. So they are not like directly in charge of anybody else in that program, but they're more in charge of just like the paperwork, housekeeping type items.
So like when you were the, you weren't the lead, you were a coach?
So the lead has also their own team as well. So for this example, I was the girls' lead, but I was also the eighth grade girls' coach. So the lead does not have to be tied to any one particular team. They could be, the lead could be attached to the seventh grade team, or however the athletic director determines, so fit.
Is that the same for football?
Football has a lead at the junior high as well.
Yes.
That we've watched to Galli, yes, at his recommendation?
I mean, is that, that didn't restructure like the? I guess the idea is that the head coach for the varsity team has input in every coach. Doesn't always work that way depending on where we're at and what, you know. So I guess, what are you asking like?
Was this a recommendation of Coach Kennedy from Clay to have that?
I don't know, I'm assuming it came through Ms. Spino, so I'm assuming he's well aware of that, but I'm assuming.
I got some question, like Coach Galli, it's his recommendation, all the people report to him, who made that change?
Well, again, they, they, in, in theory, that would be wonderful, but it's not always been that way because there's been times where the junior high has needed coaches and we've had to hire one with or without anybody's quote approval because we needed to coach. If that makes sense?
Yeah.
I'm not saying John's in that or not.
No, that's a difference, I get that situation.
But I mean, if that's something you'd like to pull, I mean, and I can get clarity and then we can add it on the 30th.
In the point of the district?
No. He's not. I mean, we could do that, I don't see any reason not to. If you need clarity on that for the, and we can add it in on the 30th, we'll have some other supplemental type things on the 30th.
I like that, I preach, I just like to compare it to football.
Yeah, yeah.
And see if the goal is being followed the same, the same.
The, the thing we talk about the most in athletics that we want to continue to try to have happen is we have a seven through 12 program, which is what I think you want and are kind of hoping happens, where you have continuity, it starts right when our kids begin, right, and all the way up. And so I'm assuming that Mr. Kennedy is well aware of this, but I'm not sure.
So I think now like Coach Galli is the facet and all that, we run the same system. So I guess I will make sure that that.
That's where we're headed, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all.
Do we know it?
So do you want to pull it or leave it?
No, I'm fine, I just put a patient later in the week when.
Yeah, I'll be happy, yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? Questions? Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Kathers?
Yes.
Mrs. Mollmar?
Yes.
And Mr. Zbyski?
Yes.
Okay, moving on.
Real quick, before we move on, can I introduce the board? Can I introduce the board to a couple of the new people you just hired, real quick? So Wes, please stand up, this is Wes Bartlett. He is now, I guess officially, our new tech director beginning when Dawn is officially done here at the end of September. So we'll have a little bit of a tag team beginning here in August officially. So Wes joins us from Lake where he was tech director there for eight years, I believe.
Yep.
And he, from there, he was in Perry'sburg's tech department for several years. So we're very excited that Wes was willing to put his application in and be a part of our future team. So, you know, I'm sure you'll get to know him, I think that his personality is one of, you know, wanting to help and do everything he can to continue to advance the district. So, so welcome and congratulations.
Thank you, I'm excited to be part of the team.
Yeah. And we have Ostrander, Dave Ostrander, who we've talked about now for quite a while in terms of the idea of that strength and conditioning coordinator and strength and conditioning and taking the idea and advancing the entire seven through 12 student population along with football, along with all our, all our sports teams. And we're very excited to get to this point. You know, and he brings us a wealth of information from his districts up in Michigan. I think he's excited, he certainly has been throughout the whole process. So Dave, welcome, we are really excited about what you're about to bring us.
Thank you, I really look forward to it. I know it's the next, the next step, next journey, it's something that Clay doesn't have. It's taken the experience that I've had for years and years and years of just trying to implement this here. And I think it'd be good for all kids, athletes, non-athletes, up and down the board. So I'm looking forward to it.
Fantastic, well, thank you, Ed, for being a part, we appreciate it.
And I could use help from both of them.
Apparently it's one-on-one, strength and conditioning and some tech, so. Did I miss anybody? I mean, Joe, you weren't on the agenda, were you?
No.
Yeah, Joe's gonna be our new assistant athletic director, or if you didn't know that, Clay Icicle next year. But that was on previous agendas, so. So we appreciate him being here tonight to kind of learn how things flow. And thank goodness, because there was a good question and he needed to answer tonight, so.
And he just picked up another degree?
Yes, yes, he tweeted out that he just earned his master's degree in athletic.
Administration?
Administration, okay, I couldn't remember exactly what, what the term is. So obviously, you know, Joe's very much been a part of our district in the athletic department for years, so we appreciate it. And Clay Grant.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, now new business. Community reinvestment area tax incentive. We need a motion to approve a community reinvestment area tax incentive. Copy has been distributed to the board. Can you have a motion, please? I'll make the motion, could we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Can we just maybe for the benefit of other instances, it's probably, I know I spoke with you, Alec, Carol, a little bit to get some background, but.
Well, Alec, come on up here for a minute if you don't mind, this is Alec Thompson, he's the new economic development director. And he, he came out just in case some questions may be over to the mic.
Absolutely.
And I'll do my best at explaining essentially what you're voting on. And business coming into, into communities, work with city leadership, work with economic development corporations and individuals to find the best, I guess, pathway in and the best financial deal they can get. Part of financial deals that are provided are, are basically tax and tax. You basically eliminate their ability to pay the tax, but they give you an abatement agreement on the other side to be whole.
Correct.
So we've done a number of these throughout the course of years, the biggest being the clean energy company. So if you'd like to add to that, very simplistic.
Yeah, so again, I'm Alec Thompson, I'm the new executive director of the Economic Development Foundation. This is actually my first CRA, community reinvestment area tax incentive. Hal pretty much covered it at a high level. I mean, again, this is nothing new for the community, Oregon has multiples of these, especially as you drive north of the schools here. And this is really a great tool for the community and also it is for the business coming here. It makes it attractive and it lets the schools and the community know that this business is really here to stay and help the community out.
So basically, the, the idea behind it is you give a tax break upfront.
Correct.
So they can get the infrastructure, get everything started.
I think in this specific one, you guys will be made whole over 15 years.
Yeah, and then, and then it's made whole.
You're not, you're not losing money, I guess, and that, that's the clear.
The little spin on this one is that it's a spec building that's happening. And we don't know the tenant, we don't know the manufacturer. So we, we have a good faith agreement is what you're approving tonight on that, a bait and agreement.
Neuter and Delman Ball, they're really looking to bring in high advanced manufact, high-paid, advanced manufacturing jobs, such that maybe in automotive industry or likewise. That's kind of the hub right now though, especially for this area. So this will be a, this will not be a $13 an hour, you know, McDonald's kind of game. There's gonna be a lot of job creation and high-paying jobs at that.
How many? Usually they have.
They have committed to.
They ring, I know.
Oh, yeah, it was in the.
It's in.
It's a one guy.
Fifty?
Yeah, fifty is what you'd cheer with, that's right.
And they, you know, they run on the low end there, they believe they can guarantee fifty and maybe eighty.
I think it was a minimum of fifty, I said.
Yeah, so why bring it to the board now if it's just a spec building, there's nothing, I know you want to market to get the businesses, but.
Correct, so the.
Why not have a little bit more, something more substantial?
Well, because the building is gonna start getting built here in September, that's when it gets delivered. Ground will start breaking in July. The importance of the CRA though is that it states in the state legislature, it has to go before the community school board first before it can get approved by city council. So it is a long, you know, this takes a two, three-month process. You guys are the first in the door.
Before they can even put shovels in the ground to build the building?
Correct, yes, this has to happen before third groups.
And do we ever see the table when the negotiations go on? I don't think we do. Like Jane or you and I would say that the table of dean when that was drawn up?
No, we, I mean, we're, we're working with Mike, we're now Alec, Mike Beasley, Mr. Beasley.
We don't have a seat, without a meeting with Delman Ball, we're not at the table with that, we're just.
We haven't been in the past, no.
We do want this to be a partnership though with the community. It's very important to bring an employer, and like I said, that recognizes the community and the standards that we have here.
Yeah, I mean, the idea behind these, and again, it's, it's one of those things where, and I, I've read about these and there's people that feel they're good and people feel they're not so good depending on, I guess, your point of view and your view on your community's expansion economically and those types of things and your cooperation with the city. I've always been one that I think if there's, if there's a city or a town that needs developing, it's Oregon, Ohio, we need as much that we can bring into this area to continue to thrive and to maintain and grow. And so that's why I've been supportive, at least a couple of things I've been involved with as superintendent. So, you know, I have faith and trust with the city that they're gonna do the best that they can. We're gonna be addressing, Mr. Beasley's going to meet with Jane and I next week. And there's going to be another one for the entire downtown center being proposed for you on the 30th. So we're gonna be ahead of time and then we're gonna also share that information with you, just kind of give you a preview of what's to come and Mr. Beasley will be here for that meeting on the 30th as well.
The great thing about these types of agreements, and they're standard across the country, the great thing about these types of agreements is in the long run, it helps the taxpayers of Oregon. The district eventually will receive its revenue, but what it does do is it takes some of the pressure off the residents of the city from a financial perspective. So that's, these things are really a win-win situation for the, to get the businesses in, but then also to help the residents within the community.
How does, how does it help me, might they even want property tax then, less income tax?
What it does is when the revenues do come in, what it does allow us to do is that it allows us to push levies further down the road because there's gonna be additional revenues coming in from the people who sign these agreements.
It's still in what you said, but I, that makes sense.
So, and I did look up, it is fifty, a minimum of fifty with projected hiring within one to three years of the time.
And multiple companies like, or whatever.
I'm not, I'm not with Neuter or Delman Ball, so I can't speak to that exactly. You know, I, I think the conversations I've had with their team, they would like one singular tenant to fill the building in hopes of expansion too, that's why it's a minimum of fifty jobs. So I think this is a great project for the community.
And it's a risk on their end to take and build, build something and then, you know, hope it comes, so to speak. I'm sure behind closed doors, there's discussions going on with a number of potential tenants and those types of things. But the fact that they chose Oregon, that they wanted to, they felt they could sell and have it here in Oregon, I think it's a good thing. We haven't had a lot of those to my knowledge.
Correct.
Certainly not presented to us.
The fact that there is no tenant though really doesn't matter because they're, we're not getting any income from the empty lot.
Yeah, correct.
We won't get any income from an empty building. So we can't get a tenant until there's a place for them to go. So I guess my question comes in is, if we're trying to make this attractive as, as a replacement for the taxes for the period of time, do we in fact get made 100% whole? Or is there a, because then what's so attractive about it, right?
You will be made 100% whole over 15 years in this particular agreement.
Okay.
And I think as Mr. Savick said, these are, again, win-wins. It's able, it allows you to push levies back because you have constant revenues, but you have constant income coming in.
And that, and to your point, that percentage is varied, different. You know, this one's 100%, we've been at 70%, we've been at 50%, and I think you're gonna hear Mr. Beasley with a different percent, come, come on another because of the, the, what we're trying to pull off as a city. You know, and there's certain numbers that work and certain numbers that don't and, and we'll have to decide if we're, you know, part of that, part of that decision or not part of that decision.
So not all of these community reinvestment area tax incentives make us 100% whole as a district? It depends on what the percentage is in the agreement. So I guess just for us to be, and the community to understand, there are specific terms that just because this is happening as a concept doesn't mean it's the exact same agreement each time. So in this case.
But after the 15 years, it, it rolls back to what the taxes should be or are.
Yep.
So it feels like it's a long way off, but when our 15-year agreement, agreements roll off for the big plants, then it's only gonna get better, so.
So I guess in this case, I'm wondering what's so attractive for the business? In the case of the 70%, what's attractive is we are not made whole.
That's when you're starting to give me on my knowledge base.
So I'm not sure what, what functional purpose this has, it's net financial dollars wise, is there something?
I think it's.
It's an upfront.
It's, it's, it's the upfront. We're not gonna receive anything for several, until it's all completed. So like in the, yeah, in the green energy plant, it was a good three, three years? Little over three years before we were able to collect anything? So, but they had three years of being able to build tax.
And there, you know, underlying things too, Hal, I think you get this. You know, this is gonna be really good for your career tech programs too. This is another, this will be an attractive tenant that will come to Oregon. I know that for a fact because of the team I'm working closely with at Neuter and Delman Ball. Whatever tenant is coming in, we wanna make sure that they understand that there's a base here in your guys' community that we're able to pull from and employ kids and grow the community. So this is, all around, I think it's a really good thing.
So to your point, Hal, when do the payments start?
We, that's why it's a good faith agreement tonight for this particular one. They'll start once the building's complete and the tenant's in. How long's it gonna take?
You said clean energy, it was a good three years after clean energy started appearing?
After they first put the first shovel in the ground.
Okay.
Once it was up and running, it was within months, we got our first check. Clean Energy Two or whatever, I forget the name of it at this point, it's been five years. We have an agreement approved by our board of the city already in place for that one. But again, it will kick in until once, once it's.
But when it comes, I guess, at the beginning, is it the end of the first year, but what's the timing?
Is there any change? Is there any difference in timing of our first payment under just the normal tax payments versus this in-loop payment arrangement? Is there any timing shift or is it, the payments start at the same time?
They, I believe they start at the same time, I would have to check this again. But it's all, you know, it's all in there, and these are, these are uncommon, there's plenty, I sure got the exact number how many there are within the city limits, but these have been going on for a long time too.
Can this wait until the 30th when, I don't know?
When's your cap council meeting?
We're hoping next week.
Yeah, they're, they're kind of waiting on us. Guys, this is a no-brainer. You're talking about, you're, you're not talking about the kind of money we're talking about when Mike comes for the next one and to order the energy plants? You're just not. My recommendation is to approve it tonight, let the city move forward. I mean, again, my recommendation.
We still have to go in front of the city and face these types of questions.
Yeah, I mean, if.
Right, so they're gonna get the answer, why can't we? I, that's, I mean, I don't know, it just seems.
Well, I know, I'm saying, all the, all the information I have with you tonight is all I can.
You know, part of it is, is, I mean, maybe, you know, if Jane were here, she could explain it better because it's more her world than my world. But if the hangup is you don't know the dollar amount of the abatement agreement, which I think is the hangup at the end of the day. We don't have that because, because of it's a spec building and we've not done this before, so.
So we're not gonna, we're not gonna, we won't ever get that?
You're not gonna get it before the 30th, nothing's gonna change right before the 30th. I mean, in terms of that information.
I mean, I guess I'm comfortable in the sense of this is 100%, you know, after 15.
Yeah, that's in, that's in this agreement.
There's no monetary change in terms of what's coming into the district. I guess my question is just, are we deferring income in that would be more useful in the near term to the district? But if no tenant goes to the building, because no one's attracted to come here, we don't get that money anyway. So, I mean, you know, I just wanna make sure we have a good handle on.
And listen, if we wanna set up at a future meeting, a whole like presentation on this, what, you know, how we do these things that, that Mr. Beasley or we get, our attorney or somebody that knows this stuff inside out, I'd be happy to do that. These don't come around that often, so.
Be more than happy to bring somebody from the county who works with these all the time too.
Sure.
Again, we, this is the first step and many, many, many steps to get this ball rolling. You guys are.
We have to agree to it before it can move forward, I understand.
I mean, I think conceptually, I would hope that most of us agree that bringing business to Oregon is a good thing for the community. I think there's just the mechanics of this that we're unfamiliar with because like you said, Mr. Gregory, it doesn't happen frequently, so we need to make sure we're, we get it done right, right? The intent is not to discourage business from coming to Oregon, at least that's my particular position as a board member. I don't want to discourage that, I just, you know, the mechanics of this are not overly familiar and I don't wanna make a misstep that is to a disadvantage of the district, you know, that would.
Well, the good thing about this one is that it's 100%.
Yes.
Not the 70%, it's not the 50, it's 100%.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's, to me, it's a no-brainer.
Thank you.
I mean, I don't, I don't mean to dismiss you, but I've gotten personal. Any other questions? Okay, discussion's over, roll call.
Mrs. Mollmar?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Kathers?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And Mr. Zbyski?
I don't know, I want to both know, but just for lack of information and knowledge, I'm sorry.
Okay, item B.
And Dave, if you don't, if you need to, it's okay. I mean, just letting you know.
Yes, if anybody needs to.
Usually we make that announcement, we forgot, so.
We forgot to do that.
I know he was in the middle of something when he, they went up here.
I heard this now, so.
All right, good, thank you, Alec.
Thank you. Item B, athletic trips, we need a motion to approve the following high school athletic trips. Girls soccer to the Midwest Soccer Festival. Olentangy or Olentangy, whichever you prefer, July 23rd to the 24th. And the Superscremington White House, July 29th and 30th. May I have a motion, please?
Some move.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Kathers?
Yes.
Mrs. Mollmar?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zbyski?
Yes.
Item C, preschool tuition. We need a motion to approve tuition of $150 per month for typical students attending our preschool. May I have a motion, please?
Some move.
A second?
Second.
Discussion?
Hal, can, I know you sent an email out with some information.
Yeah, it's, it's fairly simple. North Point ESC is the, you know, they run our preschool. But in the past, they have also like handled all the invoicing and approving of, through their board, tuition for the typical kids that are in with kids with special needs in our program. We were the last district that didn't handle it, and they were then keeping all that tuition money. So they're like, guys, you know, really, we think you guys ought to keep the money and handle it for whatever reason. So, so we're taking this over through Ms. Cosick's office and they'll be doing all the invoicing and coordination of the tipicals. But the tuition, we had kept so low at $115, which was like at least $35 to $50 lower than every other program everywhere. So we brought it up to line with most of the averages, like you know, and a few around. There's some that are closer to 200, I'm looking, right? And there's some of the 170s, there's some of the 150s. So we're just making that recommendation. And since we've not done this before, we figured we needed a board approval on it. It's something new for us, so that's what it is. It's still, it's still, you know, it's four days a week for three hours or two and a half, whatever it is, two and a half to three hours every day, four days a week throughout the school year, it's, it's very reasonable.
Did we have to add any staff to do the administrative motion?
No, no, it'd be done, existing staff.
Okay, further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Kathers?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Mollmar?
Yes.
Mr. Zbyski?
Yes.
Okay, item D, that's the fee schedules. We need a motion to approve the fees for elementary, middle and high school. Elementary fee is $45, there are no increases in that. Intermediate and junior high, the fee, the general fee is $50 plus art bands for STEM Academy. The high school is mostly vocational, a general fee of $95. It's for student organizations, band and sports. I think there was an explanation for COS where the COS I went up, the COS II went down. And it sort of evens out. So may I have a motion to accept fees, please?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Hi, Hal, you already, you know this is coming.
I don't know which one, though.
So with the, I know at one point you talked about getting rid of anything under 25, probably does not include the.
Career tech, yeah, career tech.
But we look at the intermediate and junior high with art and band. I mean, what are we charging 100 dollars for?
They're, they're, they're forced, what was that, specific? An online, like it's an online app or, I don't know if I'm saying it right, but it's something that they use, each kid uses specifically. So at the time of our discussion, which has been about, what, three years ago maybe?
Three or four, yeah.
Three or four years ago, we allowed that because that was already, and so that was, that was allowed. I don't remember the specifics of the discussion. I think the board has, has certainly taken the approach that nickel and dime in our community and our families is not the approach we wanna go and do. So at the time, we decided that career tech though, we were gonna go with those because those were more of an elective type course versus something that everyone had to take. So I guess, I don't know the specifics on each and every fee that are on here. We have not touched the general fees or regular fees since that time. If, if there's something that the board feels is not worth our time, we're still, basically, we would still continue doing and purchasing it, it just wouldn't be reimbursed at all through fees, so.
For the art and band, you know, band's obviously one, you either take band or you take a, or you don't even need band in. I'm just trying to think, art, is that a requirement in the intermediate and junior?
Art is one way to meet yours, but the intermediate, where, which one?
The intermediate for the art, is that a requirement to take art in over?
It's one of the exploratories every kid takes, yes. I, requirement, I mean.
But if it's a course where they take, then.
They all take it, yes.
Yeah, that should be part of the.
You just take it $60 for a great night.
No, it's 50, I mean, we thought, you know, I don't know, I think that one is where we require to take the class.
Again, when we talked the last time, career tech, art and band were like the ones we didn't. So I mean, if we wanna revisit that right now, I mean, I'm not, it's up to you guys, I'm okay either way. We were just going off what we did last year, again, with the, with the adjustments that were in the yellow that we sent to you in the draft. I mean.
Your only is AP computer science, is that our career tech or is that not a career? Your only is AP Computer Science, is that our career tech, or is that not a career tech, is it?
Um.
That'd be the only one that's.
No. Computer Science, they're all career tech, uh, yeah, they're absolutely career tech. Thanks for that, you know, it's like, yeah, I appreciate it.
And now it does say on here, the waiver, a waiver is available except for career tech courses and being uniform fees for students in the free and reduced lunch program?
Yeah, for the general fees, yes.
For the general fees?
Yeah.
Only, at each level, elementary, because it does say for essentially everything except career tech and being uniformed.
We've always adjusted for those, pre and reduced, and, and kids on the, on the, on those core fees. So, sports doesn't count, career tech doesn't count, but everything else is reduced or free, given their situation.
I'll give the career tech, I guess I would just like to eliminate those, that well, ten to eight intermediate school.
That's up, does the board wanna, you know, make that recommendation, pull those and vote on it, or I guess you'd have to motion to pull those first.
I mean, I guess I'd wanna make sure there's no, I imagine it's not a significant impact to the district at 10 and 8 dollars, but.
Yeah, we have to take the motion off the floor. We could leave it for this year, check into it for next year, see exactly what it's used for, how much it is, and just leave it for this year.
As long as we do that.
The woman's not like.
Listen, if you wanna get rid of the $10 fees, get rid of $10 fees, it's, it's not that big of a deal. We're gonna, but we're subsidizing that then, so just, that's, that's the bottom line, yeah, it's okay, we've made those decisions in the past. It's fine, I mean, I, I don't want that to hold up the approval of the fees. You know, it's just two things, which is, I think what you're saying, Jeff, are, which one specifically are you?
Number D2, art and band, grade 7 and 8.
So, D2, band, 7, 8, $8, and then art? And then any other ones?
No, like, the other thing I was thinking, Paul was.
So not the AP Computer Science, because that's career tech?
Yeah.
Okay, programming's career tech.
I won't give the career tech, that makes sense, and I remember that discussion, that we've been able to, that, that, because those were specific to a specific software, something you had to buy. But for some, yeah, required to take in elementary and intermediate, I think it should just be a flat fee. And obviously, the Stunt Lego is kind of a extra career.
That's an after-school, yeah, that's an after-school, yep.
Yeah, but I guess I'd appreciate if we could just make those two, and everything else, I think, is in, guideline what we talked about.
And then if Jane fills a gap of knowledge that makes us believe that those are necessary financially, we could, we could vote on those separately at a next fee.
Well, again, I just have to get specifics on, on what they are, they're, they're extras that are being brought into the program, so, I mean.
Maybe, what, what, someone, what we could look at is, is to come back with some type of a motion to the full board, um, with or without, um, approving these right now, but any within this category, these categories, at this dollar amount or below going forward, will not be added to the board agenda in the future. It might be an easy way, or, rather than sitting here and trying to pick through every single one, that'll give Jane time to go ahead and tell us what the financial ramifications will be going forward if we were to do that.
Or we could always take it off at the next meeting.
Well, then that's, that's what I'm saying, we can either.
Just let it go, otherwise, we have to rescind a.
Well, what I would do is, is, if, here's what I would suggest, vote on all the fees without, like, within the motion by removing art and band, let me get the data, if it's something that is compelling to put back on, we'll add it on the 30th. Those two. That.
Either, we either have to vote no, or we have to remove.
Because the agenda was adopted. Okay, fair enough, fair enough, that's true.
This way, so, more easier to just pass the whole thing. Find out the information, take it off at the next meeting.
Rescind it in the next meeting.
She could remove her second, and that would, I'd rather it's really for, if she can take her second off. You made a second.
So long with that.
Who did the second?
Listen, if the board agrees to remove the two, we're okay, if you're all agreement, we're okay. Like, if we wanna vote on it minus the art and the band, it's, I mean, I, you could all agree, make, make a quick motion to, to remove those and then make a motion to vote.
I defer to Carol on the.
I mean, I.
Carol, you're the boss on proceedings.
Well, we can rescind them at the next.
Dan needs to.
Or.
Second, is that what we're thinking?
I think just go ahead and pass the whole thing, if Jane did the information, we can rescind it at the next meeting. But that would require a vote at the next meeting to. It's not the answer is now.
We just have another item to vote to remove, to remove art, grade 7, grade 8, band fees for the next year.
So we're saying that that is going to be on the agenda for the June 30th?
No. Well, yes, we can put it on the agenda for June 30th.
Yes, that's why we know, I'm trying to decide, do I vote no, because you're not gonna add it to the agenda?
No, 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 no.
And vote fast, don't I mean?
Jane is supposed to investigate.
What you're saying is, you don't want it out regardless of the information you get. I mean, I mean.
Yeah, I, I guess I just wanna know, procedurally, if you're to approve it, you're telling me it's gonna be on the agenda on 30th, uh, rescind it?
We'll put it, we'll put.
That's all I'm asking.
That will require.
Another vote?
A vote.
We're gonna be voting on stuff, we'll have a meeting.
No, but, I mean, you need three votes to rescind it.
Correct, correct.
We didn't do that on the, uh, on your consent agenda when we rescinded a contract for, um, Stellino. We rescinded a contract and reinstated a.
That's part of the agenda, that's real, that way is part of the agenda.
I think what, what Carol's hang up is, at the beginning of this meeting, we adopted the agenda as written. With, right, had you, had you said, hey, can we, we need to take off those two fees, and then.
Now I had, I'm gonna have the discussion, I'm gonna have to remove until I have the discussion.
Well, this really should have gone to the finance committee anyway.
Do you want to hold off on all fees till June?
Is that a, is that a problem?
I don't believe the next, whatever many days it is, eight days is going to, and I don't have Nate here who enters all this into Power School and begins today, but I know he's on vacation all week, so it didn't happen anyways.
That's very simple.
Let's just do that, or.
Well, we have to rescind the second then.
Or we just vote no.
Or vote no.
Vote no on all fees? I think we're way overcomplicating it, that's what I'm saying.
I agree.
Then if you do that. So why don't we rescind the second?
Let's just choose not to vote on the fee schedule. Can we, I mean.
You already have a second, so you have to vote.
Oh. Well then, everybody vote no.
But then if you vote no, I don't think you can bring it back up at another meeting.
If I rescind my second, I think we're, we're okay.
Okay, rescind your second.
I rescind my second on this particular topic.
Okay.
And do that until July?
No, we can actually do it, we can turn it off, we can take it off right now, because you could make a motion without that right now.
Right.
Uh, we're gonna do it June 30th.
Yeah, so we didn't get a second, so it's off the agenda.
I don't need it.
Okay, got it.
Thank you, Dan.
Woo!
Appreciate that.
Wait, what now are we on?
We are on disposal of equipment.
Oh, gosh, I hope this one goes okay.
I got lots of questions.
Oh, gosh, I hope not.
Okay, there, we need a motion to dis, to dispose of the following, 203 books. You want me to read the serial numbers? Uh, she'll do that, so I'm perfectly okay with that. And from Clay High School, a number of things from automotive, which are old carts that are no longer in use, plus girls lacrosse uniforms, Eisenhower's DVD player, VHS player, Koi's a teacher's desk. And Colonel Stritch, we have 52 MacBook Pro cases, 42 iMac, 8, 59 iPads, and then items D through Q are all technology-related, like projectors and that sort of thing. May I have a motion to dispose? A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
And Mr. Zabisky?
Yes.
Not to complicate anything, but in the consent agenda, we added addendum, and I'm not sure if you said that.
She mentioned.
Did you, okay, my mind was racing, I didn't remember hearing it.
See, I wrote it.
All right, my bad, good. So I didn't complicate it, all right.
I thought you said this was gonna be a short meeting.
I'm done predicting.
Okay, so item F, handbooks. We need a motion to adopt the following handbooks. Substitute teacher, Clay High School, Fesett Junior High, Eisenhower Intermediate, Koi Elementary, Jerusalem Elementary, Star Elementary, and Clay High School. When I was going through the handbooks, I found the old mission statement in them, that will be removed. Mr. Zabisky was now listed as the vice president in the Clay handbook, that will be corrected, so with those corrections, may I have a motion to adopt the handbooks?
Some.
A second? Second. Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
And Mr. Zabisky?
Yes.
Item G, the laptop lease agreement. We need a motion to approve a laptop lease agreement with Apple, not to exceed $349,470. A copy of this agreement has been distributed to the board, may I have a motion, please?
Some.
A second?
Second.
Discussion?
Hal? This is, I remember one point, we were going back and forth during COVID, we're back and forth.
Yeah, this is, uh, esker money that we're using to, uh, refresh, I guess, the word we use, all our staff Macintosh laptops. So, is that what you're asking?
This is for staff.
This is staff, yep, we, we've, uh, been working on the, kids are kind of all through the COVID time, and we, we're pretty good there, so. But the staffs are, how old, nine, nine, 10?
Just finished their ninth year.
Ninth year.
Do we lease the kids?
Say that again?
Do we lease the kids' equipment?
No, we did not.
We bought those, but we're leasing the staff. Is there a reason?
Um, it just was an opportunity to not do, uh, the, the, the payment all in one, it's a 0%, so it's, it's, um, we're not paying any.
But it's not a lease, like, we're not renting them, we're gonna hold down at the end of the.
When the lease is over, they will be ours.
Yes, yeah, I think that was, yeah.
Yeah, it's not about that.
No, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call? Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
And Mr. Zabisky?
Yes.
Okay, item H, the purchase of ELA, that's English Language Arts Materials. Um, the motion to approve the purchase of Horton-Mifflin-Harcourt ELA materials for 6th grade, not to exceed $35,000, and McGraw-Hill ELA materials for 5th grade, not to exceed $40,000. May I have a motion, please, for that purchase?
Some, move upon recommendation of the academics committee, as well as the teachers within those areas.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Hal, a question. Uh, the, these actuals, like, a lot of those textbooks are online, these actuals. High materials that we're giving for these.
We purchased a classroom set of texts and then an individual student license. This is a license.
So the ELA material is a license, part of a license for the kids?
Yes.
Okay.
Every student will have their own license and have access to their content.
So essentially, it's the online textbook, kind of, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Roll call?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
And Mr. Zabisky?
Yes.
Item I, a donation. Uh, we need a motion to accept a donation from Bonnie Pfeifer of $35 to the Clay High School Scholarship Fund in memory of Eugene Goulish. May I have a motion, please?
Some, thanks.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
And Mr. Zabisky?
Yes.
Item J, the Nationwide Children's Hospital Toledo amended lease. We need a motion to approve the amended lease with Nationwide Children's Hospital Toledo LLC for the former Mercy Health Center. The lease shall be for a period of one year, expiring April 30th, 2023. A copy of the agreement has been provided to the board, may I have a motion, please?
Some.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just to clarify, we, we, uh, Nationwide bought out Mercy Child, uh, Children's Hospital, so our previous lease had the Mercy language in it, but it's now 100% officially Nationwide. So we had to, had to change the names in the agreement, and then also commit to the, to the upcoming year.
Does this kind of change the date range too in the lease, doesn't it, like, because it was school.
You know, to be honest with you, I feel bad, even I didn't cross paths, he, I was on vacation, then he went on, and so I didn't ask him the dates.
This goes through April, so we'd have to bring it
back.
Back again before the end of the school.
Probably, right.
I think this kind of changes that.
It probably does, yeah. But they're great tenants, and we're excited about what they're doing, you know, I mean, in, in terms of keeping our health center alive and well, and allowing your share to continue doing what she does is.
Okay, this, I guess, for the interest of the board, all the employees are leased, uh, most employees leased to Nationwide, so you have the same staff, and, okay.
Okay, roll call?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yes.
Item K, disposal of equipment and materials. The items listed on the May 17th agenda for disposal have been disposed of in accordance with board policy. Superintendent, three part.
All right, thank you. Um, in your packet is a draft strategic plan, just kind of reformatted a little bit, uh, take a look at that, I would like to spend a little time, if, again, my rec, the June 30th seems to be growing, but, uh, I'd like to spend a few minutes on that collectively, if that's something we could do, it's, you know, I, I really believe the business portion of that meeting would be very quick. If that's okay, and, because I think I still wanna keep the momentum going, and, but we still have a ways to go with, with kind of coming to some agreement, I, I put down some things, met with some of our administrators and so forth, but we still have a ways to go, I mean, we're, we're gonna get there. Uh, but I just, uh, wanted to see if the board would be able, and we'd go to having some discussion on the 30th, a little more in depth on it than, than tonight. Um, obviously, the, uh, recent law passed on arming of employees has come, come, you know, been asked of me a, a number of times. I'm just giving you, we haven't had a board discussion on it, I don't know if we will or even need to. Uh, it's up to the board, but as superintendent, I will not be recommending to you, as the government board, any policy that will allow this to occur. We have a great partnership with our city police and our, and our, uh, SROs, our SRO program. Um, we have a great partnership with our city police and our, and our SROs, our SRO program. Um, if, if you've heard a lot of the recommendations, one of the number one recommendations is to have that in place, which we do. There may be other recommendations that, that, you know, are kinda grown out of the most recent tragedy, but, uh, you know, we will continue to evaluate, adjust things as we, as we do or need to. Uh, but I guess I wanted to let the public and the board know kinda where I was at related to that. You do need a board to pass a policy, you know, obviously for that to be implemented, even though it's a law, it's not like automatic, uh, implementation within districts, so. If anybody wants to share anything, or I just wanted to share that with you, and that the public kinda knew where I was at as superintendent. I'm not aware of any of, at least my local counterparts that, that are looking to, uh, adopt a policy supporting this. There are some adopting resolutions against it, you know, just to make a public stance on their thoughts. So, uh, I'm sure there'll be some though, and, uh, we'll hear that, so.
Well, kind of tied into this and that one, and one of the things they talked about at the one shooting was the door closed, but then it's locked. How often do we go through and just, I know, I, I'm sure we do, but how often if someone asks, hey, how do you know, how do you know that your door's locked?
I'm gonna put it this way, during the school day, okay, during the school day, not the first morning when everyone's coming to school, doors are open and so forth, but once the official day starts, our doors, like here at Clay, they automatically, correct me if I'm wrong from a technical, they automatically lock, and every door should be locked around. We rarely have a problem unless a kid props it open or something anywhere during the school day. So I, I feel very confident, I'm not saying it doesn't happen or hasn't happened.
I guess my question, do we walk around like.
I know they do at Clay.
Okay.
Absolutely, I, I, I'll kinda defer maybe a facet, cause Joe's been there now a couple of years, I, I mean, we have talked and talked and talked about checking doors forever. So I, I know the high school goes around and checks some, but, but they can't be there every minute, every period of every day. After school, we still have, you know, people, coaches, after school advisors that prop doors up and wanna let people in because it's still a way to get in, or whatever, and we, we, I go shut those if I find them, it's, it's probably an ongoing battle everywhere we go. But absolutely, when you hear what happened at the school, and the door, you know, it just makes you hurt, sink, to know that could be a possibility. You know, if somebody leaves it open. You know, get them one, like, six rings, right?
Right.
So anyways, which leads me to the red book that you have in front of you. The red book is a, uh, updated version of what we've had in the past, but a little bit more specific to an actual, if we had to have an emergency response to an active shooter or something similar, everything is in one book for all those school districts that you see on the cover. We did this working through Lucas County, but the Impact America Group is who worked with us, gosh, over 10, 12 years ago when I was working with them, uh, Mark Wymerskirtz and his team, so essentially, you can kinda see what's in there. We have each school, um, our central office, and then we, we paid for this, we went ahead and included the Oregon Recreation Department, cause we have our kids over there so much, that I included that as kind of one of our facilities. And it basically lays out, you know, for first responders, not so much even us, it's more for the others that are gonna come in, and yeah, Mike could probably explain it even better, but it lays out where our rally points are, it lays out where our evacuation, uh, pickup, uh, points are, if, if, or, um, not rally points, but the point, if we have something happen, all our parents are gonna pick up their kids at Oak shaped Grove. So, um, anyways, a number of other things, you can see all the, the setups, but the biggest thing is the maps and the points, and everyone kinda knows where to go in a, in an impact situation. Again, it's trying to bring just an updated version of, um, what would happen, and could we all get on the same page about, uh, responding to a critical incident, so. I like the book, it's simple, it's understandable, it's got the latest Google Maps in it, school maps of the whole school. If somebody, you know, we're getting all kinds of new fire folks, police folks in, in the area, they don't know our schools, we were just talking about that. We, several years ago, we brought our police in and did tours, or at least passing Clay. They have turned over probably 75% of the police department, like, it's all new, that haven't been in our schools, so, so that's another reason. Anyways, those are your copies if you want them, if you do not want them, I'll take them back and distribute them, but if you wanna keep them, that is absolutely fine. We have plenty that will get out to our, to our fire, our police, our key stakeholders, our city departments, uh, all those folks will, will have a copy of this. SROs, of course, us in our office, so any questions on that?
So are you working on something to get a similar thing done with the turnover that you mentioned?
Yeah, oh yeah, we talked, I talked, I, I spoke with chief, um, towards the first semester, second semester, middle of second semester, so we're gonna get that for next year. Yeah, we did a breakfast and a lunch or something, I forget what we did, we did tours, it was nice, it was real nice.
And then, um, I'm wondering too, and I, I think I had mentioned this to Mr. Sandwich before, with the increasing volume of substitutes in our buildings, I think that presents.
Substitute training program, yeah.
Increased risk of just people who are, these.
Training.
Policies aren't routine for them, they're not as trained, just making sure that we make sure we don't.
We had a good thing going on training right before COVID, and we need to get back to that, there's no doubt, where we were bringing in our SROs, we're doing literally multiple trainings a year with subs as, as you approve them, kind of, you know, you approve them, like, I mean, tonight, we had something within, within a week.
Yeah, cause I think those are increasing weak spots, right, number of weak spots, and not because they're not capable, but they're not, they're not trained.
No, no, that's a, that's absolute good point, and you'll see that in our draft, uh, our draft strategic plan about upping our, uh, substitute training programs, uh, and developing a good solid program in the course of next year.
And are the SROs full time at each building? So do they have backups then, that if they're sick that they?
No, that, that continues to be a gap, uh, there isn't substitute SROs, you know, no, good question. I mean, they, they go, they leave for training, they leave for, if they're sick, or their kids are sick, or whatever, I mean, that happens. Uh, the backups are the other SROs, they all usually know who's out, and, and they will, absolutely, every one of them has been to another building for whatever particular reason, and then we rotate all six of ours over to the wind center each week, each day, each week, like, so, so pick an SRL, they'll go this whole week, and they may only be over there an hour, hour and a half, they, they're not necessarily there every minute of the day, but they're building those relationships with those kids and that staff. So we started that this year, that was the first time we ever had that, where they rotated, so. So it's not a perfect system, but the, the idea that we have also the road patrol that are, I mean, I'll tell you, I really believe if something happened, we're gonna have the entire department and, and assisting departments within minutes. You know, you read about and hear about what happened at that shooting, it wasn't minutes, was it? I mean, it was, it was tens and fifteens of minutes, and, you know, when you start pushing scary, scary stuff. But to your point, we have safety meetings each year, and we, we talk about the best ways to, to get better, you know, and refocus, cause you can, you can certainly rest on your laurels and, and not, you know, stay on top of it, so. But we have been as on top of it as any district that I'm aware of anywhere, I really believe that, I'm very proud of our whole team.
I like community in whole, with, with our support with the sheriffs.
Hundred percent.
Watercraft, with border patrol, state night patrol, all of them are on me, if, if something happens, one of our buildings.
And they attend our meetings, all those groups.
All those groups are part of the safety committee, we really help, we're, we're very lucky.
Yeah, we are.
We're very proactive when this all started years ago.
Um, just the last two things, performing arts studios moving, it's really messy over there right now, but, uh, we're shooting, it was, the goal was July 1st, it's now August 1st, but it's definitely could be done before school.
Is there any, like, scheduled, like, open house?
Nope, but we had some initial discussions about that with Mr. Snead, sometime, I guess our initial thought is, is once, we're gonna get school open and about two weeks into school, have a big grand opening, this kind of thought, kids are here, kinda get them going a little bit so they can be a part of that, you know, celebration. So we're definitely gonna do, and then, uh, the kinda idea is to do a, a celebration of the building, but then also have like a, one of Mr. Snead's first performances, like, in a small way held there for the community, like, as part two of that. Versus just the, the river coming or whatever, so, and I know Mr. Snead, he'll, whatever it is, is gonna be really, really good. And the last thing, this is the time of year I, I start getting questions about, do you have the football schedule, do you have a football schedule? Do you know when the homecoming is, do you know when senior night is, so.
Alumni band.
Wait, oh, is alumni band, it's probably not on there, but it's. Yeah.
Twenty-third of September.
Yeah. Yeah, I gotta check on that one, yeah, it's homecoming, yeah, so you have, you now have a schedule, everyone has.
This thing will be shared.
Huh? Yeah, we can put it out there.
Okay.
Um, I, I, uh, but I wanted to make sure that, you know, like I said, this is the time of year you start getting the questions. Uh, believe it or not, even though it feels like the school year just ended, people are already thinking about the fall. That's my report, unless there's questions on any other subject.
Any questions? Okay, moving on to old business? Board committee reports, finance?
No report.
Capital improvement?
Um, we met about a week, a week ago, and we discussed, uh, Mr. Sandwich is well loaded with a lot of, well, we've heard work that's going on, and he's very, come, very concerned that everything could be on time, looks like the air conditioning units are going in, a little bit of delay on our arts, performing arts building, but that's delays that all contractors have, and other than that, these, everything's getting done, a little less painting this year than normal because of, everyone has problems getting employees to do things, and we have the same.
Yeah, our summer numbers of, of part-time employees, we, we couldn't fill all our positions, so it's just, and painters is one of those positions, that we usually have four, I believe, we only have two, and so you're, you're not, you're not gonna get as much painted. All of the buildings will still look really good, so I don't want anyone to think they won't, just maybe not a fresh coat everywhere.
That's it.
Okay, policy personnel, there are new policies sent to us, so academic?
Academic committee met last week, uh, summer school is well underway, um, uh, throughout the district, uh, both in person and then also online, and it will continue depending on the, the grade level, uh, either in, in singular sessions or dual sessions, uh, going forward, um, for, um, children throughout the district. Um, the, um, ELA state test scores were just released, third grade scores, uh, June 15th, uh, second, uh, June 20th, fourth grade store, scores for English Language Arts II were released, um, Mrs. Koi is reviewing everything right now, but the preliminary numbers that we have seen have shown growth almost universally across the board in the district at varying levels, but it's really nice to see the preliminary numbers, look like we've had a nice, we've had a boost, and that's, that's what we want to do, just keep moving in that direction. Uh, the committee will meet, uh, the priorities going forward, will be looking at the test scores, especially at Facet, and then continuing to work on the ELA scores at the elementary school level. We will be meeting on Friday to do a deep dive into the strategic plan as far as goals, uh, go, um, for the, um, for the coming year and in subsequent years.
Okay, thank you, legislative liaison?
No report this time.
Student achievement liaison?
No report this time.
Okay, board discussion? I have Oregon Community Theater with Billy Wonka, July 7th through the 10th. Move, many of our students, I think almost all of our debt group is our student. Anything else? Okay, no executive session till next, huh?
Yep.
We're good.
Announcement of special and regular meetings, I have June 30th at 6 o'clock and July 19th at 6 o'clock. Anything else for the board? May I have a motion to close the meeting?
Sure.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Cathers?
Yes.
Mrs. Muller? Mr. Savage?
Yes.
And Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
And a special thanks to Carol, nice job. Yeah, thank you. That was excellent, not a single mistake the whole night, that was wonderful.
Now we have.
I had a bunch, but you didn't have any, that was great.
We have to chip her notes, so.
No, thank you seriously for staying.